Greetings, I'd like to call the meeting of the Plainville Board of Education for January 13, 2020 to order. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Happy New Year. And we'd like to start with Mr. Dabcock to lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are starting this evening with some special presentations, Everyday Hero Awards, to be exact. Mr. Lepage will take us away.
Thank you. Good evening. It's my privilege this evening to honor two of our everyday heroes from Plainville Community Schools. I would like to start out by first acknowledging Sherri Dedabo. I see Sherri's here with her family. Sherri, this is from her daughter, who is also an employee in Plainville Community Schools and nominated her mom, and I know she speaks for so many who appreciate all that Sherri does. Sherri had been working in the Plainville school system as a paraprofessional for 24 years. She has such a positive impact on the students she works with. She always goes above and beyond to make sure that she is helping to teach them and helping them to succeed. Sherri has such a positive demeanor, someone once said to me, "Sherri is the nicest person and just so calm and helpful with the children she works with," and I can attest that I've seen that many times. She puts everyone else before herself and really just wants to see everyone do well. She is an everyday hero. And I can say that our support staff in our rooms, our paraprofessionals and our tutors have such an important and critical job they do in supporting our students along with the teachers and getting the very best out of them and helping them to grow in ways that we couldn't do without those staff members. So, thank you Sherri. Mr. Dedabo, if you could come up and I'd like to thank you for all you do and congratulate you as an everyday hero. Family, come on up too, we're gonna get you in a picture. had, I have to say, probably the most nominations I've seen. I know Mr. Talata's been recognized before, but there were just so many positive nominations that came in that I had to take this opportunity. So I asked Mr. Talata to be with us tonight, and I'm happy to see he's here with his wife and a lot of fans, I believe, behind me in support. So I'm gonna read a few comments, I won't read them all, but I think they're worth hearing. "Mr. Dominic Talata has been an intricate part of our three sons' education in Plainville since 2010." This was anonymously sent in. "All three sons have played in bands since 4th grade through 12th, as well as PHS Jazz Band. Two of our three sons have already graduated from PHS and are thriving at local colleges." Third son currently participates in band and jazz band, you can probably start to figure this out. "Music education has been a huge part of their curriculum, and without a doubt, we feel it is because of the instruction of Mr. Talata. He gives respect to his students, which in turn he receives back. He encourages his students by rewarding them, putting himself in their shoes, and recognizing student leaders giving them a sense of achievement and confidence. He encourages our children to be creative thinkers, remain engaged in school, work as team players, display self-discipline, and much more. Mr. Talata is not only a talented music instructor, but he is down-to-earth, approachable, a wonderful mentor to his students, and countless other qualities, and for this we appreciate and acknowledge his passion for his occupation and livelihood." We have another nominee who I received an email from, a friend of mine over there, Mr. Andrew West. He's looking forward to going against me in basketball in our unified game pretty soon, so, you know, I'm not gonna let you take the mic, Andrew, 'cause I know you'll tell me how you're gonna beat me, but... So Andrew West said, "Mr. Talata has been great to me ever since I came, ever since I met him in 8th grade. I love seeing him every day. He is always in a great mood and has a smile on his face," and I think we can attest to that. "We had a great time in Disney." They just performed, you'll see a little clip of that later in Mr. Johnson's presentation. "I love having him as a band director. He always has funny jokes to tell, and he is never in a bad mood. He's just awesome to have at PHS. He is the best." Well said, Andrew. From one of our Board of Education members and also parent, Christopher St. Lawrence, this is kind of paraphrased from an email that was sent to Mr. Talata when he rallied for the occasion to get up at about 5:30 in the morning to perform at the Marine Homecoming for the 25th, 2nd Battalion 25th Marines. "Thank you so very much for all you did to have our PHS band participate in the welcome home celebration for Fox Company 2nd Battalion 25th Marines. What an amazing opportunity for our teenage band members. It was the perfect way to kick off our Veterans Day weekend. It was fun to see the news replay, their homecoming, and hear our awesome high school band playing in the background. Also, thank you so very much for all you do for our students. You are the best. Band and jazz band with you have been some of Christopher's favorite classes at PHS." Also from Andrew's mother, Mrs. West, this was a, see I'm taking some emails, but they all said he should be an everyday hero. "The concert was amazing. I'm so lucky that you have had such an impact on my boys' lives." That's plural, her boys. "Your band has given something for Andrew to feel a part of, something he's never had, and for that I am most appreciative." I will also add, I'm sorry, I have one more. This is from Alyssa Broschu. I think she's back there, yeah? "Just wanted to say, the kids sounded incredible last night. This is a new venture, the middle school jazz band at the jazz band practice. I was there with one other parent, and I commented to her how fantastic they sounded, particularly for a group who has never played together before, and some of them, the 7th graders, never having played under you. Both of my kids, my son Shane McCormick, 8th grade, and my stepson Philippe Broschu, 7th grade thoroughly enjoyed themselves and can't wait until next week to do it again. I think it's wonderful that you have taken your own time on a night when you already have high schoolers there for two hours practicing to coordinate and run this with a whole other group of kids. As a parent, I can't thank you enough, nor can I tell you how appreciative I am that you have opened up this extra activity for our kids to participate in. The time and devotion to music in our school system is apparent." There's a lot more there, but I'm gonna, I'll cut it there for the sake of time, and I think if I ask everyone who's here to support Mr. Talata behind me, they all have testimony as well. So, without further ado, I just want to thank you, Mr. Talata, for all that you do. I've witnessed it, I've been to Disney with the band years ago, and just your passion, every concert, every day, every class, it's apparent, and the kids and the parents and the community truly appreciate you. Thank you for being an everyday hero.
Anybody else who wants to be in a picture with Mr. Talata? Come on up. Pirates Bill, Brady, and you're right, also.
So everybody has to stay for the next hour and a half? Oh, no. You don't really have to stay, and we know we get a little dry here. But, Mr. Adlerstein, don't be misbehaving. So, we will continue on with our meeting, and the next item we have is the approval of minutes. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes from December 16? We have a motion by Lori and a second by Deb. Any questions or concerns, corrections? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. We'll move on to citizens' comments. Anyone from the community that would like to come on up and speak to the board, please come up, give your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes, John. How's that? Three? You need more than three? All right, maybe five.
John Kislak, 65 Forestville Avenue. Yeah, I was hoping this wasn't like a council meeting. I really had no intention of coming here tonight, but at the last town council meeting, one of your board members, Ms. Palmieri, said that you're not having people from the public come to your meetings and speak to you. I figured this is an opportunity to give you some of my ideas on some of your budget, if that's okay with you. I didn't make your joint meeting, I was in a citizens' and property owners' meeting next door, but I did get your agenda. I took out my magnifying glass so I could see, read some of the numbers and items, and I'd like to talk about a couple of my ideas as a citizen taxpayer on page 11, which was capital projects. These are just my ideas as a citizen. You have a thing to build a secure front entrance for $70,000. Now, the way I look at it, you have a police officer here every day, I haven't heard of any problems. My thing is, why can't you spread that out for two years? It'd be $35,000 a year. There's $35,000 savings. Next thing I have is your swimming pool heater to be replaced, because it's getting close to its lifetime. Now, some of those things can last for 10 years, it can last for more. I would like to suggest that you just buy the heater, have it in place, this thing might last two more years, you can save a lot of money. And my estimate was maybe the water heater would cost about, you know, $46,000, so you'd have, you know, you'd have, I forget how much less, I'll have these total numbers. The next thing is that canopy. I was on a building committee when that was built, and I don't know if some of you remember, that shortly after it was built, water would pour down in front of the doorway, and the architects and engineers said it was your parapet wall, it was porous, and I knew that wasn't true. So it was on Mother's Day, May 10, 2009, I brought my own ladder and two 5-gallon buckets of water, went on the roof, and I saw that the roof drain was higher than the edge of the roof. So water would run to the edge of the roof, so I poured my water, it went down, it took about two minutes, and here it comes dripping down in front of the door. Monday morning, I got Mel Massey, and their fix was to caulk the flashing, which is Mickey Mouse, and I think that's why you're having that problem now. So my suggestion on that $20,000 to fix that is you hold that off, you get our maintenance people out here, building grounds, they're really talented, you scrape that, get some good paint, and paint it temporarily till you can find out if that roof drain has to be lowered, because you're gonna just be wasting your money again. There's an $18,000 savings. Now, the last thing I have, student and staff Chromebooks, and then staff laptops, a total of $263,000. Now, my way of thinking, I can't see why you can't cut that 10%, $26,300. I think you can play with them numbers, and I think you can knock that down. With all those savings, I come up with $103,300 off of capital. Now, these are just my suggestions to you. I know all of you really love seeing me here and my ideas, but it's something to think about. We gotta find a way to save some money. At the last council meeting, I was talking about, somebody's gotta help the taxpayers. I'm retired, I got a 1.5% increase in Social Security, and Medicare took away, it was $28, Medicare took away $9.10, so that's the kind of raise I get. I have no other income except some pensions. So you gotta think about these things. Try to cut your budget the best you could to help us. I appreciate your time, I'm not gonna stay for the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kislak. Anyone else like to speak to the Board of Education? One more time, anyone here wishing to speak to the Board of Education?
Good evening, Happy New Year. My name's Rebecca Carabinahern, 50, View Street in Plainville. Just a question from the parents from Lyndon. We had noticed that there was a change from intern principal, Mr. Saunders, to principal being signed on his email, so we didn't know if a formal announcement was going out with his appointment to the families, and we were just curious on that, and then if there were other principals interviewed and considered for the position. Thank you.
I'll just answer that, it's a quick question. Mr. Lepage informs me that he still remains his interim, maybe?
Through the end of the school.
Maybe it got dropped.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Education? Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, that brings us on to our council liaison, Ms. Pagliisi. Join us at the podium, and Happy New Year.
Good evening, Kathy Pagliisi, 50, West Broad Street. Happy New Year. I haven't been back for a little while, but conflicts of meeting schedules, and I unfortunately will not be available for your first work session for your budget because of the holiday. The council will be having its meeting on that Tuesday, however, I will catch up with the subsequent meetings and make sure I get here as often as I can. So, the town has had some interesting activities going on just before the end of the year and going into the first part of the year. I will try to make this as short as possible, but there have been some interesting things that have been going on. At our last council meeting, we had a report from a number of people regarding the Clean Earth Fire. Clean Earth, formerly known as Phoenix Soil, is located on Washington Street and North Washington, to be exact. And there was a fire on December 31 at the facility at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. Just to give you a little overview as to what Clean Earth does, they actually take in contaminated soils. They're not terribly contaminated, but they are contaminated. This is an approved process by all the environmental agencies through the state of Connecticut, the DEEP. The EPA gets involved in their licensing and their approvals as well, and what they do is they bring in contaminated soil, which can come from a variety of locations. It's brought into the building, and it's burned at a very high temperature, which gets rid of all the contaminants. The soil that is a byproduct of that is sold for other uses. So this business has been in operation for about five years, originally Phoenix Soil, now Clean Earth has taken over that operation. That's essentially what happens down there. But, there was a fire, as I said, on December 31. The fire marshal, along with our fire department, police department, State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection responded to the event. The facility, interestingly, had been in a shutdown mode since around 9:00 AM that morning, so they have not, they had not been doing any dirt burns, they had shut down. They operate under a permit issued by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and under the permit, they are required to submit a notification within five days of any potential endangerment, such as a fire. This notification was received last Friday. The cause of the fire, however, is still under investigation. Much of the damage appears to be limited to a wet scrubber, the continuous emissions monitor, and the stack. The wet scrubber removes any leftover impurities that result from the burning of the soil. There were no injuries as a result of this incident, and it was brought under control very quickly by our fire department. Mr. Miller, who was at our meetings, Mr. Scott Miller, who is the general manager at the facility, couldn't say enough about our fire department. Our fire department has been at that facility a number of times for a number of training sessions, specifically in the event that an incident occurs. So our fire department was very familiar where the layout was, what they were dealing with, where the water sources were. They were able to get in there very quickly and contain the fire without any damage to people. Now, the plant has been damaged, and they probably will not be able to open up again until the end of February, but this is not until after all available reports and information are received. Right now, at least as of today, there is no determined cause for the fire. It's being investigated by Clean Earth's insurance company. That once they come up with a determination, they will be reporting to DEEP, as well as the town of Plainville. So there is more information that will be forthcoming. There was some concern about contaminants being released into the air during that burn. That too will be addressed. As of last Monday, we were told there was no harm or damage to people, or the general air quality in the surrounding area. However, I think there'll be more information that comes out, I don't know that there's more or less or whatever, but I think until we get all of the reports back, it's wise to just wait and see. And again, they will be shut down until probably the end of February, because there was some damage inside that they have to take care of. So that was sort of a big story in the town, it was on the news, and very quickly, the town council wanted to make sure that we explain to the citizens exactly what happened, what's being done, and when can we expect additional information. So once we get that, of course, we'll be sharing that with the town and everybody involved. Couple of other things that we've been working on, we have recently done an assignment of a tax lien. What that is, is if, through the legislative body, we can assign any and all liens filed by the tax collector to secure unpaid taxes on real property. Basically, if there is outstanding taxes on a property, the town is authorized to go ahead and sell those tax liens to other entities. We just approved doing that on a piece of property on Camp Street. The outstanding taxes owed were significant. We sold the tax lien to a bank that is probably in a foreclosure action with the owners of the property. Probably within about 30 days, the town of Plainville will receive those back taxes at 100% to pay what was due to the town. This does not mean that future taxes won't be accruing, because the property has not changed hands. So as we go forward, if additional taxes are accrued on that property, that too will be coming back to the town of Plainville. So it's a unique situation, but was certainly a step the town council thought was appropriate. These taxes have been outstanding for many, many years. This is not just one or two years, we're talking over a couple of decades. So, we were able to do that, and we're waiting for the finalization of that. Couple of more things that have been going on is we have been having some of our staff members and people retire, which, of course, we wish them well, and they certainly deserve it, but we have a number of them retire at once from key leadership positions. It's becoming a little bit interesting. So as of now, we had Mike Woodger, who was number two in the roadway crew, retired the end of December. Corporal Patrick Budin is retiring in February from the Plainville Police Department. He has been with the town for many, many years, and I'm sure a number of you know Corporal Budin. Detective David Posadis, who has been with the town, again, probably 25 years, is going to the State Police Investigations Department. Larry Sutherland, who has been our fire marshal for about 15 years and a Plainville firefighter for over 30 years, is retiring the early part of February, and he wishes to remain as a fire inspector, much lesser, you know, role, but he still wants to stay active within the firefighting organization. Scott Colby, our assistant town manager, also resigned as of the end of January. He will be going to Windsor as an assistant town manager there. He's a very bright young man, he's going to a bigger town with some changes in responsibilities, but certainly another pair of shoes we're going to probably be filling. And in addition to that, Marcy, and I'm afraid I don't have her last name, worked in the tax office, is leaving to go to the Farmington Tax Office. So as you can see, some of these positions are, they're substantial, they're long-term people that have a great deal of experience with our town. We certainly wish all those well that are retiring and going on to other adventures, but we'll be pretty busy, not me personally, but certainly staff will be busy trying to interview and fill some of those spots for the upcoming year. That's it. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Pagliisi? Thank you very much. All right, continuing on, we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Chair Tyrell. I'd like to, at this time, introduce my assistant superintendent, Mr. David Levenduski, who's going to share an enrollment and class size projection report as of this current time, which is instrumental in planning for our budgetary needs and in such matters going forward. I know we put a lot of work into this, so, thank you, Mr. Levenduski.
Thank you, Mr. Lepage. Good evening, it's my pleasure to present the class size and staffing report for this year. Do I? Maybe I'll just give you a thumbs up to click. All right, so the first slide you're looking at is an enrollment forecast, so trying to forecast the overall population. This slide takes into account trends and forecasts for live births in town and the impact on enrollment of those children as they become school-aged. And those blue highlighted numbers that you see are based on current student persistency. And so when you look at the total number of students forecasted for next year for the 2020-21 school year, it comes to 2,379. And at this point, if we look at our current numbers, that's about 40 students less than we anticipate. So we're looking at about 2,339 from our numbers currently. So, this graph shows the forecast for the past and actual enrollments, with the enrollments trending higher than the 2012 forecast. So if you look at that, before, we have the right-hand column where it's the forecast for 2021 and further into the future. The ones before that, the red was the 2012 forecast, and the blue was the actual, and you can see the forecast was under the actual for those years, whereas SAM had taken that into account and now has increased the forecast so that it's a little more true to form, and was a little more... So we're looking at about 2,339 from our numbers currently. So this graph shows the forecast for the past and actual enrollments, with the enrollments trending higher than the 2012 forecast. So if you look at that before, we have the right-hand column where it's the forecast for 2021 and further into the future. The ones before that, the red was the 2012 forecast, and the blue was the actual, and you can see the forecast was under the actual for those years, whereas SAM had taken that into account and now has increased the forecast so that it's a little more true-to-form and was a little more accurate with our predictions. This slide represents elementary enrollment numbers for next school year, based on our current student population at the elementary level. This chart shows the number of sections or classes that currently exist at each grade level at each school and also what we anticipate next year. So if you look at the color bands, you'll see the red going to the red from this year to next year, and it follows from pre-K all the way down to fourth grade. With those numbers, just have to keep in mind that pre-K numbers, and for next year, take the same number of classes, and we cap them at 15, okay? And then if you look at the kindergarten numbers, if you look at the red going to red from last year to this year, we actually increased those numbers, and the reason being is the trend was a little higher than what we had. You know, it's really hard to predict K and pre-K because, you know, we don't always have all of our families enrolling in pre-K, so it's not an accurate number when they do, when we get those kindergarten enrollments. So last year, we had a higher actual enrollment than what we anticipated, so we did bump those numbers up to more reflect the average of the last few years. Like last slide, this chart projects the middle and high school enrollments based off current numbers and the anticipated difference in students per grade level and for school total. These numbers are constantly fluctuating due to registrations and withdrawals, and the high school numbers also fluctuate during the year, especially from grade band to grade band, because we have students who are so-called, they're quote-unquote "jumpers," where if they get some credits within the first semester, they may jump from sophomore to junior within the year. So those numbers do fluctuate a little. But if you look at those green boxes on the bottom, projected enrollment in the middle school is about 10 students less for next year than this year, and for the high school, we're looking at an increase of about 24 students from this year to next year. So here's the projected enrollment for next year across the district, and I talked about that number earlier. 2,339 is the anticipated number for next year based on our current numbers. And then by grade level in school, you see what our anticipated number is for all grade levels across the district. This slide projects the total number of open-choice students from Hartford as well as Plainville students attending school elsewhere. So that includes our Hartford and Creck magnets, special education outplacements, or choice high schools. So when analyzing students coming into the district with those going out of the district, we have a net gain of 30 students in the district. So if you look at that left side of that chart, 118 students is what we're pulling in for the open-choice program. So they're coming into the district. The right side for projected magnets and out-of-district tuition, those are all students that are in other schools, and that totals 88. That magnet total of 64 includes both Hartford and Creck. And then if you look all the way to the right, out-of-district tuition, only Creck magnets are included there because we don't pay for the Hartford magnets. So we actually have 88 students that are out of district, and then we have 118 coming This slide provides a look at the certified teachers broken out by elementary school and grade level during the current school year. So the green total, we have 61 total elementary grade-level teachers, and then it breaks it down by grade by school. So 22 total at Linden, 22 Tofflin, and 17 Wheeler. Then the next chart is proposed for next year with our projected numbers, and we anticipate the same staffing needed at the elementary level, 61 overall teachers, so no net change. But those blue and green boxes within show how it fluctuates teachers at different grade levels because the number of classes per grade level will change. Actually, Linden is anticipated to have the same number of teachers in grade levels last year, whereas Tofflin and Wheeler, there's change back and forth, but no net change overall for teachers. So class sizes are projected to be similar to years past. So if you look at that column all the way to the right for anticipated for next year, there's no imminent concerns at this time. The grade level averages look good, and they look consistent across the board. Again, pre-K and K are those kind of unknowns, so we try to anticipate as best we can. We think we have a good number to go by right now, but those will be, that's why the asterisk is there, those could change. For the secondary staff summary, it shows the number of teachers per school and department for both middle school and for the high school, and then our total in the green of 77.2. And the .2 comes from two language arts teachers at the high school who are both .6 positions. So those two people account for 1.2 positions. For the middle school, this year's class sizes for the core content areas are consistent, again, with past averages, so nothing really concerning or new there. It really lines up with the last few years. Same with the class averages for the specials. It just shows this current school year lined up with years from the past. These are also consistent. The numbers for specialized music classes, which are on the bottom, that indicates very positive participation by the students. And actually, the next presentation from Mr. Johnson for the high school will show how much participation in the fine arts and music program there is. For high school class size averages, this shows the sections running for core content areas and the average class size of each section. For this slide, it's important to keep in mind that class sizes for each course section vary due to the instructional level, whether the course is an elective or graduation requirement, if it's a semester course or a full-year course. So there's a lot of factors going into this class size average. So we don't have as many retirees as the town side so far, but we anticipate a few retirements, and if those hold true, that could result in cost savings for those positions and hiring at a much lower salary step, and also could lead to some creative alternatives for some positions that are vacated. And then lastly, this slide just points out how there are challenges with projecting enrollment at any point in time, because if I looked a week from now, some numbers change and fluctuate, so we do the best we can to give you the best information we have at this time. But just a little data to, you know, reiterate that point. From the middle of April of last year through January 9th of this year, Plainville processed 259 student enrollments. And just this school year alone, from the beginning, the first day of school until January 9th, there were 46 students enrolled and 52 withdrew. So it was a net loss of six students. So in your packets, you do have a few additional pages that talk a little about class size at the high school, different courses. But that's it for the presentation for what I have. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Any questions for Mr. Levenduski? Is there a way that you can figure out who's moving into the new houses that they're building over there?
I can take a walk and ask some questions.
We have a whole area.
That's a big unknown.
Yeah, we have a whole area there below Tofflin that's continuing to be built up with homes, so it'll be interesting to see what the impact of that is.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levenduski. I appreciate all the work you put into that from doing it in the past. I know it's a great deal of work, and it is a moving target, but it gives us a very good understanding of what we need to forecast and plan for in our budget. At this time, I'd like to introduce our next presenter, our principal from the high school, Mr. Carl Johnson, to give the strategic plan update for the high school or state of He's also joined by his team, Mr. Ko and Mrs. DiLorenzo, as well as, I know Mr. Crowe is running around the building somewhere at all the athletic events. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Where's yours?
Thank you, Mr. LaPage. Before I begin, I just want to take an opportunity to thank Mr. LaPage, Mr. Levenduski, Mr. Alderstein, especially the Board of Education for allowing me to come out here tonight. I will try to have some brevity, but no promises, because I do take a lot of pride in PHS, so if I get going, I might talk for a little while, but I'll try my best. So traditionally, the principals come before and give an update on their buildings, and, you know, having the opportunity to come here and give you an update on PHS is one of the highlights of my year, to get to share it with the town and get to share it with the Board of Ed. No such luck. All right. I'm going to talk over this, but a few years ago, we started a tradition at PHS where we have a graduation walk or a senior walk. What happens is, on the morning of graduation, our graduates go back to their elementary schools, and they walk through the halls of their elementary schools, kind of closing the circle of their education in Plainville. The reason why I want to start with this tonight is it really highlights, I think, our thinking up at the high school, where we really now see ourselves as a component of an ongoing process over 13 years for our students. And now with the addition of pre-K, that goes even further. And, you know, if you ever get a chance to see it, it's one of those magical moments on graduation day. But it really just highlights the idea that, you know, high school is not separate from the other schools. We're completely connected to those other schools, and we just continue a process that starts way back in pre-K or kindergarten. So just some quick data. PHS by the numbers, as Mr. Levenduski already kind of mentioned, our enrollment at PHS currently, our senior class is the smallest of the classes. We sit at 154 students in the senior class. Our largest class is the freshman class, the class of 2023, which is at 191 students. And so we kind of see a similar projection of what Mr. Levenduski is reporting, and we anticipate that the eighth-grade class, the class of 2024, coming in next year, will be right around that number of 180 or so. So we continue to kind of tick back up where we had gone down by about 20 for the past year or two. If you go to the next slide, we always like to give an update just on staffing at PHS as well. I'm not going to go through each category because it remains very similar to last year, but we have 11 academic departments. We have 60 faculty currently at PHS. And then it goes through the rest of our support staff and the people who kind of make PHS the special places on a daily basis. By the way, I'll just mention, all the pictures in the background of the slides are from this year, and we'll get to social media in a minute, but all those are up on the social media as well. Just a quick update on security at PHS. This year, during the summer, we moved our main entrance down to traditionally what was called the auditorium entrance, and that was really done out of security. That area of the building has a, you know, a contained atrium, so when we have people come into our building, we can kind of control the flow of people from that atrium. As Mr. LaPage, I'm sure, has said, in the capital improvement budget, is a secure entrance. What we would like to do is even secure that more. Most schools, and if you go over to Wheeler, you'll see this, where they have a secure entrance into the building, where it goes through a series of doors, just to control that even more. What we'd like to do is have people actually enter through the main office instead of directly into that atrium, which would be a huge help for us at the high school. We also have gone on board with Navigate Prepared at the high school. Our staff has been trained on it, and we've already had three drills where we've used Navigate Prepared. We're still learning the program, and we're still working at it, but we continue to get better at it, and we're getting very good at accounting for students when we use it and also communication during drills. I do want to highlight, this is the second year we've had S.R. Omarns at the high school. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that she has become deeply ingrained in our culture at our high school in two years. You know, I put a couple photos up there just highlighting her different roles. If you come to the high school at any point, you'll see her in classrooms, you'll see her moving about in the cafeteria, in the hallways, and really being a mentor and a, you know, someone to go to for students. The school improvement plan for PHS, the school improvement goals, this year we had six goals. Two of them are directly related to our district theories of action, which I know Mr. LaPage has talked about, and those are the first two goals up there, so I won't repeat them. But it really goes through just the idea of using our PLCs to improve student performance and also the use of learning targets. The four that are unique to PHS, three of them come directly from NIASK in our priority growth areas, and then the fourth one, actually, the third one on that list, is to reduce the percentage of students who are considered chronically absent at PHS. Just so everyone knows, and we'll get to it in a second, but chronically absent means you miss 10% of the school year for basically any absence reason. The other three, like I said, are directly connected to NIASK in the priority growth areas, so increase the availability of interventions, also to adopt and implement a vision of the graduate, which I know Mr. LaPage has mentioned, and then also to increase student voice and choice. And I think as I go on tonight, you're going to see those keep coming back up. On the next slide, you'll see our current data on chronic absenteeism, and I really have to give credit. Mrs. DiLorenzo is here and Mr. Ko, our two assistant principals at the high school. They've worked tirelessly this year on chronic absenteeism and tardiness, and it's kind of selfish that I get to stand up here and tell you about it, because it's really because of their hard work. So what we've done is a lot of work around notifying parents, communicating to students, a lot of different methods. We've tried to make this an awareness about being attendance in school. Just very simply, it's the number-one correlation between student performance, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out, but if students are in school, they do better. And so we want our students here. What the graph shows you is just a month-to-month comparison, and Mr. Levenduski has done a great job this year of compiling data for us and making sure we keep on track with this as well. But what we're seeing is that because of our efforts, instead of the kind of drastic fluctuations, and what you're seeing is the percentage of students who are on track to be chronically absent, so in other words, by that point in the school year, they've missed 10%, what we're seeing is that level off. And so what we kind of see is that instead of these big fluctuations month-to-month, where we're kind of just going with what happens with students, we're hanging right around 10%. And if we can finish the year that way, that's going to be about a 4% reduction in our chronically absent number, which would be a pretty significant drop. So we're going to continue to monitor that, and we're going to continue to work hard. The other piece that we've really worked on this year is tardies to school. And although it's not directly connected to chronic absenteeism, again, Mrs. DiLorenzo and Mr. Ko have worked very hard on this. And one of the things you can see, and, you know, this has just been very big for us, is that there was a moment where we ran the data, and we actually thought we were only down, I think, two tardies? Two tardies for the year? And it was this real moment of like, what are we doing? Because we put a lot of work into this. And then we realized that we actually had run the data wrong, which is always good to check your math. And what actually was ending up happening is that current year-to-date, we're down 1,166 tardies to school. That's a huge number. And so what that means is that we're getting some buy-in among our students and from our families to get students to school on time. There's still obviously work to do. We'd love to get that number down even further, but again, you know, we want students there. Connected to the, as I said, the school improvement goals, I'll be coming back before you along with Mr. LaPage. We're having one more meeting, and then we're going to be ready to bring forth the vision of the graduate that we want to adopt. And at this point, we've pretty well set upon our skills, and I don't think we're going to see any change with that. And we've also set upon those definitions of those skills, and then we'll be coming to talk more about that. But that's going to lead to a lot of work in the future for PHS and what we're going to do. And we're excited to roll that out, and we really see it as a continuation of the work that we do at the high school, and especially in that video I started with, that's going to be the connection that really drives a lot of work across the district. Just quickly with student instruction, you know, continually, if you go to PHS and you walk around, you're going to see teachers using learning targets in their classrooms. Again, that's just learning goals and student-friendly language that is a universal practice. We also see universal instruction, universal instruction interventions across classrooms. I think what's important to mention there is that we don't, you know, we've gotten out of the mindset of viewing math as in math classrooms or English as in English classrooms or science in science classrooms. We try to do a lot of cross-curricular things where students are working on math in, you know, unified arts classrooms. We've also adopted instructional focuses for each of the department, which has helped us as administrators as we go around to observe teachers. We continue to look at implementing strategies to increase engagement and student learning. And lastly, you know, I think the thing I'm most proud of, and I think in many ways happening organically, is there's a lot more student voice and choice that's happening in classrooms, and you really see that across the board. So very quick data just on PSAT results. So what we like to do is, we really like to track cohorts at the high school. So we look at graduating class, and we like to follow them over their four years of their high school experience. Our current freshman, the class of 2023, will be the first graduating class that will have five years of data because they took the PSAT eight. So what you see when you look at these, and whether we're looking at the class of 2022, 2020, or the classes of 2021, 2022, is you see a continual rise in PSAT scores from year to year. And that's, you know, that's a credit to our teachers, and that's a credit to the hard work that they do on a daily basis to get our students continually improving. If you go over, you'll see the scores the same way for the other ones, and every year, year to year, we are increasing. And every year, year to year, we are increasing for our students. Now, the one thing we're going to have to start looking at, and this is going to be some work for us. If you really look at that data, what happens is we tend to start at a very similar place and we tend to end at a similar place. And so if Mr. Ross goes to the next slide, you'll see we can pretty much track it pretty well, what's going to happen. And so now the real challenge is going to be for us as a building and as a faculty is to think about what kind of interventions we can put in place to get that final cohort number higher than it's been. And that's really going to be a big goal for us moving forward. You know, personally and professionally, and I think for everyone, if you talk to our faculty members, we want to break that thousand. And if you look at the previous data, you see we always kind of get right there, but we're not breaking over that line. And so that's going to be a big effort for us over time. In terms of student learning and performance, like I mentioned, the PSAT scores, you also continue to see faculty using different types of assessments to prepare students with SAT-like questions across all the different disciplines. There's also interventions we have put in place for SAT and for other academic, you know, concerns. So SAT prep classes, we continue to offer in both English and math. And we also, you know, a point of pride, we have, in every class, we have approximately 80% of our students linked to Khan Academy, which is an online platform for SAT work. You know, we continue to use performance data to identify student needs and also look at targeted instructional interventions that we continue at the high school. And, you know, I think a theme of this is you're going to see, we continually try to reflect on the needs of our students and how we can get better. I also want to mention, just because it really is through the support of the Board of Education and through Mr. Lepage and Mr. Lewandowski, common planning time at the high school. This has really become an integral part of our professional culture at PHS. Where in the third year of dedicated CPT time, we are able to work our schedule so that every teacher gets one block every four days set aside for them to work with each other in CPT teams. Those teams are broken up by disciplines and they do a whole host of different activities in there. And I think one of the exciting things is that we're seeing these CPT teams evolve. And one of the things that you're starting to even see is peer-to-peer observation inside those CPT teams. So we're very excited about that. For school climate and student discipline, you know, and it's a point of pride, I think, for the administrators and for the teachers in this building. And I also think for the students. You know, we have a very good high school. We have a great high school. And you see that reflected in our discipline numbers. And what we're looking at here is major discipline incidents. So we're, we're not talking about lunch detention for tardy to school. We're talking about things that are bigger than that. And that's how we've always tracked it these years. So you can see we've had a consistent drop in discipline numbers at the high school. And we, we hope to continue that. And some of the stuff we hope to put in place, we want to keep seeing how low we can get those numbers for students. I'll mention, I think, a lot of that, and we were talking about it as a team. I think a huge piece of this is the relationships that we have in this building. And I think if you come to PHS, one of the things that people notice, and I'll mention it at the end with NIASK, people are aware of the relationships we have with students, and I think that drives a lot of this. And I think our teachers, you know, the other administrators, we've all become very proactive at trying to head off situations before they lead to a level where we have to assign discipline or assign consequences. In terms of school climate, you know, this year I've really made a push for communication, social media. I follow an educational leader on Twitter. And one of his messages, and I think it's incredibly important for us as educators, is to be proud to never miss an opportunity to brag about your school, to never miss an opportunity to share with the world how great your school is. And if you know me, I think you know I take a lot of pride in this place. So just, you know, for me, I went in and I looked at my analytics on this and it kind of surprised me. But this year, just up to this point, I've had 8,010 profile visits. And then the biggest one for me, and this is a little hard to define, but 224,000 impressions. And I think for, you know, a small high school in Connecticut, that's pretty good. And we'll see how high we can get that number. But I'm not going to stop bragging about this place and I'm not going to stop telling people how great of a place it is. I also want to mention this year, school climate-wise, and I think if you speak to the teachers, one of the big issues and one of the big things concerned that was brought to us was cell phones in the classroom. We took this on at the start of the year and I'm sure you saw some communication about some cellphone holders in rooms. I give a lot of credit to the teachers for enforcing this and really explaining to students why we felt this was so important. And it's really in that next piece about maximizing instructional time. And I also give a kind of credit to the students because I think the students have really embraced this. And I think many of them would agree that, you know, cell phones and electronic devices have become quite the distraction. I honestly think some of them enjoy a break. I also just want to mention that we are undergoing SEL training and we plan to implement that with our faculty. We're doing it currently. And we'll be assessing kind of when it's ready to go out to students, but we anticipate that in the near future. In terms of school climate, I'll talk over it, but just very quickly, something we started this year, which for me was just an awesome moment, was we had all the teachers at PHS came down when the eighth graders finished their assembly with us and we welcomed them into PHS. And we kind of saw this as a moment of welcoming them, welcoming them into being Blue Devils. And if you've ever been to graduation, you know that one of the last things we ever do is we form an honor corridor of all the teachers and we say goodbye to our students. So again, kind of seeing it as completing that circle of their education at PHS. Some department highlights. As you heard during the Everyday Hero Award, we have an incredible fine arts department at the high school. Our music program, our art program is, you know, I would say, second to none. Currently, we have 407 students who are registered in fine arts classes at PHS. We have 111 students, I'm sorry, 119 students in the combined PHS bands. And we also have 68 students in the combined PHS choirs. For the size of our high school, that's an incredible number. Also a real highlight this year, and you can see a photo there. The PHS band went down to Disney World and played at Disney World and at Disney Springs. And there'll be a clip at the end to show you that. But, you know, I think we took our show on the road and I think we showed how great of an arts program we have at PHS. In regards to English, the English department is working very hard this year on building a culture of reading. And I'm sure, you know, the board is very aware of Superintendent Lepage's super reading challenge. And this in many ways is how it's translating up to the high school. There's an emphasis on choice books for students in English classes. And what that simply means is instead of the old days of everyone being assigned the same book for English class, we're now getting into the idea of choice. You also have a lot of new books that are being assigned and, you know, looked at. A lot of collaborative work with Mrs. Pykel, the library media specialist, to increase circulation of books and also awareness. And also, you know, I, I hope you'll check it out. The English teachers created a Twitter handle called @Plainvillereads, where they're really trying to spread this culture of reading through that way as well. If you're here on a Friday morning, you'll hear, at this point, teachers, but we plan to have students soon too, who announce after the morning announcements a book they're reading that's having an impact on them and they share it with the school. And so we're going to keep on thinking of ways that we can increase that culture of reading in the building. In terms of library media, you know, one of the things that just, you know, I think this is a hallmark of Plainville Community Schools is the collaboration that occurs between the schools and the town. The New Braunheim Herald right now is offering a dollar for every book that a student reads and they are donating it to the food pantry. Students have to write a book review for it, very short. And so far, we're up to 25 book reviews. And so we're hoping to grow that number considerably. Mrs. Pykel is also in charge of the field work experience program, which is in its first year. If you remember, last year, we talked about that. And it's been very successful. We have 10 students who are currently out there doing internships in the community. We have students who are with the police department. We have students with veterinary hospitals. We have students with the New Braunheim Herald, Snow White equipment. You know, you have a lot of different opportunities there for students. And we only anticipate growing that program over time and giving students more choice as they finish out their education at PHS. And then there's just some great stats there on the number of students who have visited the Learning Commons and the books that have been checked out this year. The math department has really finished their alignment. You're going to have to go back two years here to remember this a little bit, but we switched back from geometry and so moved around the course sequence. And the math department has done a great job of finishing that work and now we're ready so that everything is back aligned. We also have had some teachers who have attended a professional development opportunity where actually Texas Instruments is going to be giving us some brand-new technology to pilot in our Calculus BC classes. And we've had some students get out there doing some different stuff. The biggest thing I would say, and I think this is something we're excited about, is the collaboration that's now happening with the Unified Arts Department, with the math department. And they're looking at how to integrate unified arts into the math classroom. But I think really excitingly is bringing math students down to the unified arts classrooms. So even during math classes, so they can see the practical application of what they're doing. In the physical education program, continue to have, you know, incredible gains in our data tracking and also our goals for the National Physical Fitness Test. The PE department did an incredible job two years ago of working together to look at our National Physical Fitness Test. I think Coach Farrell left, but under the leadership of Coach Farrell, doing some data work around that and really setting goals for students so that we could figure out how we get students to pass this test. And we've had incredible gains with that. They continue to use Breakfast of Champions as a way to celebrate that. I think one of the big things to mention is that very soon, we're going to be integrating safety into the PE 1112 curriculum, which means students will begin being certified in CPR and safety. And we're going to have that coming into the system. That'll be a part of their 1112 PE curriculum, but that's going to meet a state requirement that's been passed. In science classrooms, Mr. Fusco, the new IL of the science department, was very excited to share that we have 67 students currently enrolled in UConn ECE science classes. The thing he was most excited about, and I think this is a real point of pride for the science department, is that currently they have 201 students enrolled in science electives. And so just so you understand, you don't have to take four years of science at PHS. But what that basically means is you have students choosing to go above and beyond the graduation requirements for science. And again, the science curriculum continues to work on NGSS standards. That photo wasn't on Twitter. That's, that's them dissecting and I got a little nervous about putting it on Twitter, but I figured it was okay for here. It's a little blurry, so. In social studies, the social studies department took on this year looking at reading comprehension, especially when it comes to primary sources. And they've really looked at this as using reading comprehension to hit SATs and for PSATs. And they've done a lot of work with looking at baseline data of students and ensuring that they're putting in proper interventions to get students' reading comprehension levels up. But again, specifically through the use of primary sources. In special education, I'm actually going to stop talking for a second. I'm going to let one of our teachers explain an awesome program that just started at PHS.
In collaboration with Dr. Lems from the Center for Children with Special Needs and Lois Rosenwald from Autism Service and Resources, Connecticut, we have launched a peer mentoring program at Plainville High. We have selected nine students to mentor other students with social deficits. Though we are in the early stages, we are already seeing improvements in peer interaction and the great benefits this program provides. So far, we have formed a committee that includes both special education and regular education staff. The entire PHS staff was given an initial training during the August professional development. And since then, the committee has been meeting weekly to plan next steps. Before the winter break, the committee held three trainings with the selected mentors to give them information about their mentee and prepare them for their role as a mentor. At this point, mentors and mentees have been having weekly lunches together to get to know each other. And mentors are coaching mentees in social situations in the classroom and throughout the day.
In the Unified Arts Department, what you see is that the financial literacy courses and the personal finance course have been updated to continually reflect current needs. These courses are really designed to meet the needs of students as they leave high school. You know, the financial literacy course, in my opinion, is one of the most important courses students could take in high school. The manufacturing and construction technology career pathways is constantly expanding. We're currently discussing with Goodwin College, partnering with them to increase our offerings for manufacturing and technology. This is an area that I really think PHS leads the way and we continue to think about ways we can do it. Just as a point of pride to the board, I just want to mention that when Goodwin College came here to tour our facilities, they were amazed by what we're able to offer here. And I think that's a real point of pride for us. The Industrial Technology Enterprise is in its first year as a pilot. It's, it's doing some great things. If you remember, that is where they're operating basically a business down in the Unified Arts Department. And they're currently actually manufacturing their first products. There's also two, like I had mentioned, that in-depth collaboration with the mathematics department. And they're actually even, you know, I think something very interesting. They're even in talks of potentially in the future, what would some courses look like that would be co-taught between a math teacher and a unified arts teacher, which I think is some interesting things. The World Language Department has been doing a lot of work. They just recently created a site that's linked to the Plainville School site where you can find out all kinds of information about what's happening in the World Language Department and all kinds of new resources and updates about what they're working on. We will also be offering the Connecticut SEAL Bili literacy, which is a program that's being offered by the state. I was actually working with Mrs. Perez over break of finalizing the design. That'll be put on students' diplomas. But basically what that means is that a student has shown proficiency in two languages. And so that can then go on their diploma to show that they are, you know, demonstrate Bili literacy. The one thing I did want to mention, I just think a point of pride for the World Language Department, their action research this year, they've been working on lesson plan design and peer observation. And that's something that they've been continually working on and I think we're going to see some great things from that. The School Counseling Department continues to look at how to assess the needs of students at PHS, whether that be academic, career, or personal. And really partnering with all kinds of different resources in the community and at the school. One of the things I think unique that we did earlier this year was we had a school-wide needs assessment that was given to students to find out what kind of needs they felt like they were out there, especially in terms of social, emotional learning. And also a universal screen from teachers, thinking about our connections with students and ensuring that we do have connections with our kids. Right now, the School Counseling Department, they currently offer lessons in freshman academy that were revised based on that needs assessment. There's also scholarship application workshop for seniors that they've been working on. Interview skills workshop for seniors, college essay writing workshops for all juniors. And we'll be also doing future resume writing workshops for sophomores with the social studies department. The college essay writing workshop is with the English department. And so again, making partnerships outside of their department. That photo, by the way, is Officer Martin's teaching one of the lessons from student need and it was actually on social media. I'm thinking about that. Just very quickly, we are in the middle of our NIASK process. If you remember, last year in October, a small group of people from NIASK came out to look at our school. In November, this coming year, 2020, or actually, I should say now it's this year, November 15th to 18th, another team will come out to finalize that process. So that, that becomes the new decennial visit. It's not as large as it once was, but it's, it's kind of the highlight of the end of that 10-year process. I did want to mention, and I just think it's important, I'll try to find them real quick. We received our final report from NIASK in the spring. And they included 35 commendations for PHS. I've served as a chair on some of the NIAS committees generally. We try to keep it to 15. So I think it speaks to what they thought of PHS when they were here. I just want to share a few with you, just because I think they're important and I think they support what we've been talking about. So these are commendations from the group that came and toured our school and stayed with us for two days in October. They said, "The safe, positive, respectful, and inclusive school environment." "The feeling of safety reported by students and staff, which is supported by the addition of the school resource officer." "The efforts to ensure that each student is known, valued, and connected to the school." "The written curriculum is in a common format that includes units of study with guiding questions, concepts, content, and skills." "The opportunities for learners to use technology across all curricular areas to support, enhance, and demonstrate their learning." "The provision of 11 professional learning community meeting times throughout the year to ensure vertical alignment and consistency of curriculum." "The support and funding of professional development opportunities throughout the district that are personalized and relevant for teachers." "The efforts of the School Counseling Department to meet the needs of students." "The ongoing work of the library media specialists to collaborate with teachers to support their work." "The team of special education teachers and specialists that provide effective support for special education students." "The existence of short and long-term plans to address the capital and maintenance needs of the facility." "The effective leadership of central office personnel." "The allocation of time and funding for professional growth and development, including professional development time, common playing time, and district PLC time." And that's only a selection of what they wrote. But I think it really is a point of pride when someone comes from the outside and tells you how good of a place you have. We continue to be diligent with our work on NIASK, but we feel like we are in very strong standing for our visit in November. Just to wrap up, for next steps at PHS, as we look to the future and things I feel like I'll be talking to you about next year when I come back. I'll be talking to you about next year when I come back, implementation of the vision of the graduate at PHS. We will be well on our way to doing that. Continued access and use of interventions for our students, both at social, emotional, and academic. One thing we will be, you know, I believe Mr. Lapage will be talking to you in more detail about this, but we're really looking at what kind of social-emotional interventions we can provide, and especially in a very concrete way. And that's something that we're really making a priority for our school next year. Continued refinement of our instructional practices and policies to increase student voice and choice in their education. I think you can already see that happening at PHS, but we want to do even more. Adoption of the 2023 graduation standards, which was passed by the state of Connecticut, and increased focus on student success plans, again, to align ourselves with Connecticut law. Just very quickly, I just want to end on a high note. So as I said, the band was down at Disney this year in December, and I'm not overly sentimental all the time, but I got to tell you, watching the PHS band turn the corner and marching from Cinderella's Castle was kind of a special moment, so. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to compliment Mr. Johnson and his entire team, Mrs. DiLorenzo, Mr. Co., Mr. Farrell. I know we didn't talk about athletics as much tonight because there's only so much time and so many great things to talk about, but I know you had the, the board had an update about the amazing athletics, the increase in participation, bursting at the seams with indoor track that was brought back, just some really great things across the entire school. So I'm kind of like a proud father? I don't know. Just having spent six years here and just seeing the growth since I've left makes me feel a little self-conscious, but Mr. Johnson and his team have really taken it to the next level in so many ways, and I'm really proud of all the work they're doing and very excited for our kids especially. So thank you. Just a couple of other things that, really quickly, Mr. Johnson did reference the Super Reading and Math Challenge. The math piece is really more for the elementary level, and Mrs. Graham Douglas and her team, and Ms. Perez, and Mr. Levin Dusky, and our entire, Ms. Davis, and our entire central office team have spent a lot of time and thought and planning a really, what we believe is a really thoughtful and meaningful reading incentive program, challenging our students to read 20 minutes a day across the district or more, and also doing five minutes of fun, simple math practice, just working on those math skills. You'll see some videos coming out shortly that show that in a very fun way with Mr. Levin Dusky and I and some guest performers, I guess. So just really trying to get our students to have that independent love of reading. And there is a weekly log sheet, and I'm thankful to the families for supporting this. Just going around the district last week, which was the first week of this program, the kids are running up to me, "I already read 100 minutes," and really excited. And there's going to be different incentives and vouchers for the book fairs and bringing in authors and some really exciting things to elevate the excitement about the importance of reading. It's really foundational to everything that we do. So I want to thank our whole staff, all of our principals and all of our teachers, and of course, our administrative team for all the support they've given to this new program. And we had a book swap here, right in this very location on Saturday, although it was a smaller tenant than we had hoped. We had some very excited people who were here with armfuls of books, leaving and very excited to be the recipients of books that were gently used by others and turned in through a book collection, and we'll continue to do that and build on it from year to year. And then finally, I just wanted to point out that I didn't give you new placemats, but I did give you a new copy of our district vision document that will be, it is displayed across the district now. This was updated with your approval earlier this year, based on a lot of hard work done to streamline it and really make it reflect many things Mr. Johnson spoke of, and we're doing it all across the district every day, centered still around students' teaching and learning and our same core goals, but some very specific actions to help raise the level of student achievement, support students' SEL and staff through the social-emotional learning, increasing upon safety, aligning our instruction to standards even more so, learning targets, and the many things that we're doing. So without going into the whole thing and reading it for you, you have a copy for your own wall in your kitchen, on your refrigerator, or wherever you'd like to put it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lapage. Anybody have any questions for the superintendent? All right, so when we get these framed, wherever we hang them in our houses, we need to send pictures in so we can show Mr. Lapage.
Please do. Take a selfie and we'll tweet it out.
All right, thank you. That's going to move us into Board Subcommittee Reports. And first, we have our Student Representative Report. There's Ally down there waiting for us. Ally?
Let's see. I also had the increase in indoor track participation in my report for the sports. Last year, it was about 16, maybe 18 kids, but this year it's over 30, which is great because it's only the second year that we've brought it back. But overall, PHS started off the new year after a successful winter break. Now everyone's getting ready for their midterms next week. We will have Monday off for Martin Luther King Day, and then Tuesday through Friday will be our midterms. And overall, PHS has had a really great first semester, and I think everyone's really excited to start the second half of the year.
Thank you, Ally. Facilities, policy, and finance. I'm going to just kind of say that we have not had any meetings unless I slept through them, so somebody just kick me if that's the case. We have not had any meetings, and we are going to talk a little about subcommittee structure when we're done. So we're going to move right into our liaisons, the high school. Mr. White?
Yes, the PAC was originally scheduled, initially scheduled to meet last week on the 8th, but that meeting has been put off until tomorrow night. And I also understand that members of the PAC will also be at the combined Parent Advisory Council meeting on Thursday.
Tofflin Elementary, Ms. Martinez?
Yes, Tofflin was awarded $1,200 for Science Days from the Elizabeth Norton Grant, and they are currently working on contacting various groups for pricing and more information for the Science Days. The Scholastic Book Fair went well. The next one is in March, and as always, volunteers are always needed and welcomed. The 5th grade activities are being planned now, meeting on February 6th at 6:00 PM to delegate and discuss in more detail upcoming events. And the XL discounted events, Monster Jam and Globe Trotters are all set up. There's more information on the Tofflin PTO Facebook page. It's not a fundraiser, but a fun time for Tofflin families to be together. The PTO does a great job of getting discounted rates for events, so the Tofflin kids can go out together. And the next PTO meeting is on Thursday, February 6th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Linden PTO, Ms. Wells?
The recent Linden PTO meeting had to be canceled, so it was rescheduled for this Wednesday, January 15th.
Thank you. And Middle School PTC, Ms. St. Lawrence?
Yep, they met last Tuesday, January 7th, and unfortunately, I was not able to go because we had that joint budget session. But they did send out their yearly MSP PTC donation letter, and they've already gotten quite a response from that so far, and they're getting ready to do their Valentine flower grams, which will be coming out around, well, for distribution around Valentine's Day. And their next meeting will be Tuesday, February 11th.
So just to clarify, you can be a parent at the Middle School of Plainville and not have to participate in any fundraisers because you can just send in five or 10 bucks or something like that, right? Yeah, that's kind of nice because you always feel guilty if you don't participate, and then you have all this stuff around your house you don't use. That's neat. PTO liaison for Wheeler Elementary School, Ms. Palmieri, are you okay down there?
They have not met since December. They're meeting next Thursday, the 23rd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Currett Council did not, has not met since we last met. I think it is next Wednesday, maybe the 17th. Chairperson's report. Okay. So under new business, we are going to ask, I'm going to ask for a motion, and you can see it there, for approval of the subcommittee structure, which it is pretty much what we had discussed in the past, where we combined finance and facilities. And we, of course, continue to have our policy subcommittee, and we added an outreach committee. Ms. Davis will be so happy to know that we will be asking for her assistance with that. And we also have a Board of Education Curriculum Committee, which will be meeting, probably not real frequently, but once in a while when things occur and we feel like we need to have more of an update. So that'll be, that'll be our structure. So we'll be asking for that approval under new business. I wanted to mention that the CAE-B-Currett Legislative Breakfast is going to be on February 20th. I know Joan sent us all the information, and I think several of us are attending that. There was some information just, I think, yesterday or the day before about a settlement on the CHEF program and the CHEF settlement. I don't know exactly, I tried to look and see what it really meant. It's kind of long and convoluted, as you can imagine, but we'll be, I'm sure, hearing more about that. I'll be going to Washington DC in, from the 31st of January till February 4th, attending the advocacy conference down there for NSBA, and visiting with our senators and state representatives down there to talk about education and the needs of education. So I'm fortunate enough as CAE's federal relation chair to be able to do that every year. So Mr. Lapage is going to help me out with a little information. He's so happy when he got that from me that he's going to have to provide me with some information, but. And then lastly, we've been talking as a board about doing some goal-setting and also some self-evaluation. And so one of the processes that I know myself, I know Crystal and Foster had all seen a little bit of information about is something called Lighthouse. It's a project that is run through CAE, and it really deals with the board learning about what the board needs to know, and becoming a better board through looking at the data, looking at the right data, knowing what data to ask for. And so this is a process that we can engage with CAE, but we got a little initial information, and I think we're going to be pursuing that as part of our professional development for us as a board. So that'll be something we'll be hearing more about coming in the future. And I think that's it. I will add my congratulations to both of our everyday heroes, in particular, Mr. Talata. I know is always near and dear to the heart of my kids when they were students here. And I'll just add that thankfully, there's no Tyrells left in the high school to really mess up that tardiness count because that would have been it. That was something that we struggled with. So no Tyrells to cause a blemish there, so. And with that, I'm done with my report, so we'll go on to unfinished business, which we have none, I don't believe. New business, Board Open Forum. Anyone have?
I have one thing. I would just like to note that robotics is very much alive and well at the middle school. The VEX robotic team this past weekend scored very well. They scored, I know at least three first-place awards they won at the VEX robotic event that they held in Greenwich, Connecticut this past weekend. And so I just think that's another aspect of our schools that has a real positive area of growth and represents the town exceptionally well, and I think we're really proud of the work that they're doing with the robotics at the middle school.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to let you know that the 12th Annual Memorial Golf Outing for St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital has chosen Axel Lulette as their 2020 annery. All proceeds will be donated to St. Jude in Axel's name. This is an all-day event with 18 holes of golf, raffles, and dinner. Past events have raised close to $40,000. No minimum age for golfers, so it will be separate women's and men's groups as well as mixed groups. Teams can make signs for each hole honoring Axel, and the dinner event is when Axel will be remembered. Looking for, Tofflin is collecting, or they're looking for door prizes and raffle donations. Tofflin would like to put together a raffle basket, and the event will be on Saturday, September 12th, and you can get information at www.memorialgolfouting@simplesite.com.
Mr. Lapage?
I just wanted to say that I was extremely proud to be a part of this community on, related to that PJ Day for the Kids, where we, as a district, prior to the holiday break, wore pajamas to school, students, staff, administrators, all around the district. We have some great pictures, but the meaning behind that and the videos that were provided by some of our own teachers with, who have been at Connecticut Children's and battling with pediatric cancers, and just the emotion that went into it. Our district sent in a check for $5,500, all donated by teachers and students, you know, despite the fun of wearing my onesie. It was a Patriots onesie, I will say, that I won't wear for a little while, but it was just amazing to, you know, Melinda Booth did a great job for student council, leading the whole thing, and then all the schools jumping on board, and it felt great to be part of this community. And I know Axel is one of the students that we're honoring through that, and I'm really happy to hear that, so thank you.
Anybody else?
So I just want to congratulate the two everyday heroes, Ms. DeDabo and Mr. Talata. I also want to thank Mr. Johnson for his presentation, and I also want to thank you for your tweets that you do tweet out. I really enjoy the visits you make to the different classrooms, and it's kind of fun because I know Anna will come in, "Oh, Mr. Johnson came to my class today," and she enjoys that, and I enjoy seeing what the kids are doing in the classes on Twitter. I think I said that right.
You did.
I'm sure. They'll tell me if I didn't at home. So thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Real quick, I also enjoy your tweets, and I think it's a competition between Mia and Crystal, who likes them the quickest. Every time I go in, she's like them. So we clearly enjoy them.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much, and we'll move on to our quarterly special education report. Mr. Adlerstein, I think you're going to give us some information about special education.
Right, so once a quarter, you ask us to report on special education tuition. It's important to keep an eye on it because it can change very fast, and it's big numbers. Our Director of Special Education and People's Services is with us tonight, Vicky Truzinski, in case you have questions, but we can report that we're on budget right now. If we ended the year with the students in place, that are in place right now, that are outplaced, which we know won't happen, it's always in flux, but with the 18 outplaced students and the number of students receiving other support and services, our special education tuition line would, if it ended the year with all that in place, would end the year about $190,000 favorable. However, that's achieved by, wherever possible, wherever it makes sense, keeping students in district. It's better for students, and Ms. Truzinski and her staff work very hard to try to do that. I just know just from hearing some of the challenges that it's not an easy thing to do, but by doing that, they are able, there is a favorable financial impact as well. However, the $189,000 will be offset by some costs related to keeping those students in district, agency fees and some internal fees. And so with that offset, we're roughly on budget when you take that into account.
Questions on special aid? All right. Thank you, Mr. Adlerstein. Turf, it's not time for the turf. Request approval, we have a request for approval of administrator retirement. Someone want to make this motion? Motion for retirement of Ms. Rosa Perez. Can we have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments or statements? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We could oppose, you know, we could just say no.
Aye.
She can't go, we could do that.
That was.
All right, no oppositions. It's unanimous, she can retire. So a request for approval of the subcommittee structure.
Madam Chairman, I request that we approve the revised subcommittee structure that was presented through the That was presented to the boards this evening.
We have a motion in a second. Thank you. Any questions or anything, comments? All right. All in favor?
Only comment I would have, I would hope that every board member is involved in at least one of the subcommittees.
Yes. Well, let's do this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Lepage?
I just wanted to take a quick opportunity. Ms. Perez is here tonight, and I just want to thank her. I had the opportunity to hire her out of 130-some-odd applicants as an assistant principal here at the high school when I was principal, and she stood out above everyone else at that time, and she continues to do so as Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment. Has done a tremendous job, and one of the points that Mr. Johnson raised about NEASC visit was that our curriculum is in great order, and it's largely due to the work of Ms. Perez. And that's something that you don't hear at most high schools. It's kind of something that takes a back burner, especially with all the different personalities and things that people want to teach at the high school level. So to have kind of a uniform, a very uniform and agreed-upon curriculum, and just the 100 other things. We met today, and she shared the 100 other things that she does that I'm going to have to consider regarding those, you know, those responsibilities and how we'll cover those going forward. So that's, that's for future discussion, but I hope, I'm going to try to convince her to spend some time with us in the future, despite the formal retirement. But I just want to take a moment to thank Rosa for all she's done for the district, the high school, and all of the schools. So thank you, Ms. Perez.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. If there's nothing to be removed or discussed, I'll ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our most favorite motion here at the end. Nicole made a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Everyone, have a good evening.